Welcome to episode 169 and we're all kinda here but all in different places. Hey Noel.
Hey.
Dennis, how's it going?
Hey, I'm hanging in there, living the dream.
Yeah, and Robin's here, people are everywhere, we're all scattered. Oh, hi Robin, how are you doing, right?
Yeah, I'm doing alright.
Can you guys hear her?
Yeah.
Okay, good, I wasn't sure. Alright, so what's new, anything guys?
Oh god, well how was Halloween for you guys? Did you guys go trick or treating?
Yeah Dennis, you must have, right?
Yeah, we made out pretty good, we got a lot of candy over here. I have this, so, I don't like to get too personal, but I have this weird thing that I do in my sleep where I sleep eat. You wouldn't guess by looking at me, so I feel like I wake up in the morning now and I'm like diabetic shock or a sugar coma. So I've been eating a lot of candy in my sleep lately, it's going pretty quick, but we did well, we just went around like, you know, town of Tonawanda area. And I was very surprised at how many people aren't participating in Halloween. It seems like every year it's declining more and more and more, it was like, you know, trying to find a decent street with, you know, the houses lit up.
Yeah.
Was kinda difficult, which I'm like, you know, is that like a sign of the times, you know? But we did, we did pretty well.
Yeah.
How about you Noel, your kids went out, right?
Oh yeah, I took them to two different places, they got a lot of candy, I went to my mom's, then I went to Ryan's mom's area and I've eaten most of their candy.
Well, that's good, we do not trick or treat anymore, so, the kids are too old, so we usually go with grandkids, but you aren't feeling good, so we couldn't go this year. But speaking of trick or treat, let me bring this up here, this is kinda like ours, the stars, if you guys out there like this show and enjoy what we do, send us stars, ninety-nine cents gives us a hundred stars, if we accumulate enough stars, we can then get advertising through Facebook. Also, all the money of the stars goes into either like stuff for a better camera, better whatever, and also eventually going into what we wanna do, which is to catch a predator stuff, so. That's where that's going from, so send us stars, Christopher said, Chris says hi, hey Chris.
Hey.
Hey Chris.
Alright, uh, the news that, cause you guys, you guys were gone, you went to, Tessa had a great show up in Buffalo, right, last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was cool.
A lot of stuff happened, D'Angelo, where is he now and he's on the loose?
He's free, he is free as of two days ago, he got out and um, he's now though on the Niagara County sex offender registry, which is good, there he is.
Yeah, there he is.
Red or red highlight.
Yeah, yeah. So he's, uh, do they give his, they put his address on there and everything, right?
Yep, Ridge Road, that's where it is, so he got a brand new house, a brand new car, it's all on there, so I like, where's he getting this money from? Like where is it all coming from? That's what I'd like to know, but I know the house isn't in his name, he did that purposely so nobody could sue him or go after him. Which, you know.
Yeah.
With that, but um, I, it's just disgusting that he's free, I mean, that went by so fast. It was four months, and all the newspapers said six months, six months, it wasn't six months, it was four months, not even four months, not even four months.
Yeah, and he bitches and complains about his lawyers, he got the deal of the century, he got, he got, he got other crimes thrown out, he gets only four months, he, I mean, everything, he gets out to a brand new house and brand new car.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
He got the Hunter Biden sweetheart deal is what he got, I don't know how he did that, and to have the money for what, a 2023 Land Rover and a $300,000 house?
Yeah, that's something.
You gotta follow the money on that one, see where.
Yeah, because Wendy's asking, are there going to be civil lawsuits against him?
I plan on continuing to um, go after him. I'm gonna, I just gotta get a lawyer for that, but, a new lawyer for that one, but I plan on, I don't plan on dropping it, I plan on going after him.
Yeah, um, because obviously like Dennis said, where's the money, where's it coming from, I think it'd be pretty.
The house is paid off, it was mortgaged, how are they affording that?
I know his dad.
What, 7% interest? Go ahead Noel, sorry.
No, I know his daddy's helping him out, the dad put it under his name, so his dad is trying to help hide him.
Yeah.
The dad who is the same person that attacked people online.
Yeah, yeah, attacked Noel.
Yep, call me a pathetic liar.
Yeah.
That's what happens when you make excuses for your kids, people need to feel humility, it's a natural, healthy thing. That's how monsters are made, and unfortunately, you know, it's, he's a convicted pedophile and his dad is still bailing him out.
Yep, that's how it's been, their life from what I was told, that's how it always was since he was little.
Yeah, and he, I mean, and they just, like you said, humility, I mean, I can't get over how the parents, well, I shouldn't say this, why would I even say this, but you would think there'd be like some shame, you just said humility, something. You would feel, I mean, he had eleven, twelve felonies against him. And that didn't count the felonies from the three other cases that he got out of somehow, some way. Um, the other felonies, wasn't, or was there no, it was just misdemeanors over the, when he was trying to set up the DA with the election fraud.
Yeah, those are, I think those are felonies too.
And that doesn't come around again till January, I don't think.
No, yeah, they're not doing it anywhere with that, which is ridiculous, I seen, I read in the paper somewhere that they offered him a plea deal for it, but he's not gonna take it.
Well, no, he might as well not, because they might pay him, but the way things go, you know what I mean? What's the equivalent of four months in jail for raping everyone?
Yeah.
Sounds like he's ready to run for public office.
He is, and Niagara Falls will embrace him, we'll talk about that later on, um, as we got an election tomorrow and a real big scumbag running. Uh, Scott says money's probably from the fossils because he is taking the hit in the voter fraud, huh?
Yeah.
It's a good, you know.
Probably not a bad theory behind that.
No, it's not.
Well, that's all anyways is with the fossil.
So now, Noel, let me ask you this, cause you'll know, I think you'll know, so now this whole thing with the sexual predator or whatever the hell they called it, um, he's like on special probation, right?
Yes, he's on sex offender or sex something registry, um, I don't know, something probation, sex offender probation, some type of, some type of probation where it's supposed to be strict, supposed to be extremely strict, but who knows, because their idea of strict is not strict.
Yeah, their idea of strict is four months in jail, yeah, that's their idea.
Even six months, okay, was an injustice.
Yes.
And he, and he took a plea deal, let's not kid ourselves, he took a plea deal because he knew if it went to trial, there, the amount of evidence was so substantial that it would have completely worked against him, I mean, he knew he was guilty, so he just figured he would take the deal because that was the best he could get, and realistically, that was the deal of a lifetime.
Yeah, just like in 2009, he took a deal too.
I mean, the district attorneys should be ashamed, really should be ashamed of themselves, because they did it in the Belter case, you get the victims, the victims are, the victims sadly, you know, they don't have lawyers. So they go in there and talk to the DA, the DA, and the DA's like saying, oh, this is a great deal, you know, we got, you know, it's, we'll get him, cause he can't, you know, he's gonna violate and all this other bullshit, in the meantime, they agree, I feel sorry for them, cause it isn't fair, because what do they, you know, they're gonna believe what the DA says.
Right.
And, there we go, they just, and the DAs are the worst, they, we have really bad, really bad ones, obviously in Erie County and Niagara. And maybe Erie's even worse, cause I don't know.
Yeah, they did nothing, they, I almost think that Niagara County might have actually done something more at this point.
Yeah, but it is, it is something how the Belter case and his case, when it came to sentencing was very similar.
Well, how many, how many times are they gonna like, just say, okay, well, he's a good boy, oh, he's a lawyer, he's, you know, in good standing, all that bullshit and just let him pass?
Well, I'm afraid, I'm afraid they will on probation.
Right.
Yeah.
I think.
How about this Dennis, did you realize that guy never paid a cent, he was never, he never paid bail, he never had to.
Nope.
All those felonies, no, no bail, they brought him in, they mugshot on him and let him go, and the judge said he's not a threat to anyone, or, you know.
You know, this seems to be a reoccurring theme that we see across the nation, and I really wanna know who funds the campaigns for these DAs, because it's really interesting how these DAs are very choosy on, on who they prosecute, how they prosecute, and the recommendations that they make for sentencing on this, because you have people that are out there committing heinous crimes like this, and they get a slap on the wrist, right? And meanwhile, the people that lose the most even in the beginning are the victims, and they don't ever get any justice. But then you have these DAs that are completely radicalized, that go after other people, and they slam the book at them for things that maybe don't align with their political agenda or ideology, it's wild. And we're seeing this everywhere, it's not even, and it's here, obviously, it's in Niagara and Erie County. Um, but it's really concerning, because this, you know, what hope does a victim have at coming forward and seeking justice when this is the outcome?
Yeah, and in Niagara County, for sure, I didn't realize, I shouldn't, only Erie County's the same, we have people that have gotten away with murder, that are politically, have literally got, that killed a person, and that was it, I mean, nothing happened, just walked off, and uh, I, yeah, you're right, I don't know, and then you get into bail, the bail, I know this didn't, I know this isn't under, going underneath the bail reform thing, like what, letting him go, they didn't, that was a judge's decision, that was Judge Clark's decision, he decided on his own, this guy is okay, he's a good guy.
Not a threat.
He's not a threat to the community, hi Jerry, Jerry's saying hi to us.
Hey Jerry.
Um, wonder how Judge Clark reacted to D'Angelo's violent level three, yeah, right. Yeah, that's the other thing, he's a violent sexual offender and he got four months.
Yeah, he got violent offender status, so I would like to see how Judge Clark feels now, probably still the same.
Do you remember when he said, well, he's not a flight risk, and we were all going, yeah, exactly, we would be better off. Away.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. Yeah, no, cause, yeah, that was his thing, he's not a flight, that's right, he walked out a lawyer and he'll come back, something weird he said, about, came here as a lawyer.
Came through both doors and, yeah, something stupid.
Yeah.
He should be called out, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, he retired though, he retired quick, if you guys noticed, before everything ended, he kinda just got out of town.
Yeah.
That was his last, his last official thing, I think, was to take that one felony away, remember he took the, there was twelve?
Yeah, and then he put it down to eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
And the one he took away, I don't understand how he could have, how he takes that away.
Yeah, that was his final, that was his final.
It was, it was with the girl that, in the car, that he took it away from, um.
Yeah.
What was?
And she was the one that gave the victim, victim impact statement, and if you listen to the statement, I, I don't know how he takes that away, like that was.
Wasn't there that day that he would have taken away more?
Yeah, yeah, you know what else too, after listening to the, um, you guys listened to the victim impact statement, you hear, you see the classification, it really then showed you what a fix this was, you know, what, what a, you know, what a good job whoever did, whatever they did for him, because how, you probably wouldn't, you probably wouldn't do, if you're a violent sex offender, you're going to prison, I would think you're gonna be in state prison.
Yeah.
But, you know, not this guy, he's out right now, so everyone's gotta pay attention to where he is and what he is.
Yeah.
I wanna know what he's doing for money. I don't care where he's at, I wanna know how he's, how he's living, how is he paying his bills? Because if you wanna cut off the head to a snake, you take away their ability to provide. How is he living, where, he had to pay his attorneys?
Yeah, no, I'm waiting for Niagara County to give him a job, I'm curious where this job is gonna come.
Yeah, which factory's gonna hire him?
Yeah, who's gonna hire him and who's gonna, what part, what government agency, who's gonna do it?
Right.
Those people who helped him become a lawyer, they'll fix him up.
Sure.
It'll probably be CPS.
Oh god. Office job.
Yeah.
Did a nice job in a, maybe a church somewhere, you know.
Janelle will have him running more campaigns.
Yeah, Frank here said $100,000 Land Rover, yeah, yeah. So he got Katie, he's probably ghostwriting and other under the table jobs for all the legal cronies in Western New York, that's a good one, sure. So he's disbarred from, in New York State, what about other states?
Yeah, other states, he's not allowed to practice in any other states either.
He can't even apply, you know, he can't even try.
I'm sure he'll try.
Would he license in other states to practice?
I know he was trying to run to Arizona to get a job, and when this all first happened, he tried running to Arizona.
Right.
Cause his girlfriend, Arizona, so.
He should go to California, he'll probably be celebrated there.
Yeah, probably, I, um, well, I guess, you know, it never ends, I'm curious when he decides to come back to Niagara Falls.
Right, he's probably already been in the falls, he's probably, who knows, he was probably at Mr. M's the other day when Janelle Fosso got kicked out.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right, we'll have to get into that, now, I gotta ask you one other thing though, what can, that stupid website, which they're making money off of, that's, that, yeah, the action or whatever it is, so his father allegedly owns it now, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what they were concerned about in court, I guess, from what I was told, um, he was asking, well, not him, but he had his attorneys asking if he could still run the Niagara Action Page, if they could take that off of his probation, they could stricken that from his probation, if he could still run the Niagara Action Page when he gets out of jail. So he doesn't give a shit about anything but the Niagara Action Page.
And somehow they're making money off that page too.
Oh, they are, not making money off that page, they turned it into a business page, and his ex-girlfriend supposedly is the one who said she took it over, but she, she took it over only because he went to jail, she didn't buy it from him, she didn't take it over, that was just a huge cover up, and I called her out on that, that was a huge cover up, because if she owns that page now and that's her page, why was Nick D'Angelo in court having his lawyers ask if he could still run the page when he gets out?
Right.
Why is it under his father, in his father's name, why is the page in his father's name?
You would have thought, I had thought for sure, they were fighting for it just to sell it. Because they're, you know, they wanted money, obviously, maybe they, not that they need money, you get my point, but I think that's what a normal situation would have been. You know, like, okay, I can sell this for whatever, and, but no, no, they didn't really take a hit anywhere, did you notice that? Like, really, okay, he, whatever happened to him was so minimal, like, think about it, nothing really, in my mind, substantially enough happened.
No.
So, they, they just, it's the deal of the century, I think, um, he should be fruit baskets and flowers to the lawyer, his defense attorneys, I mean, those people.
Father said that they were weak attorneys, so.
Yeah, weak attorneys, he really believed he should have been free, I guess.
Right, or if you're listening to this, next attorneys, if you're listening to this, he thinks you guys suck and that you're weak, that's exactly what the father said.
Yeah, 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 exact words, a piece of garbage, hey, before we get into other things, you know who's always connected, um, to Nick, is City Court Judge Faso, Janelle that is. There was a story, Noel, what did you hear, or what did we, what do you got?
So I was told by somebody who was there, at Mr. M's the other night, that Janelle was obnoxious and got kicked out of Mr. M's. Janelle Faso, she was supposedly obnoxious and drunk, and um, they had enough of her and they kicked her out, that's what I was told.
Wow.
And the girl was right after her, herself, she was ready to like knock her out, she was so mad because of how obnoxious she was being, so.
Yeah, there is, I'm gonna say, this is gonna be a nice thing to say, um, there's a maturity issue, right? Can we, I mean, that's kind of a nice way to put it, I think we're immature.
Yeah. I can't believe that she's able to be a city court judge, and she's in the bars every single day, and it's just, it's ridiculous, she's, she's very immature and non-professional, and she was still sending victims to Nick, people to Nick when, even after he was charged, even after she won City Court Judge, she was still referring people to a rapist.
This city will, this city loves to, um, elect those type of people too, they really do, they just don't care.
Oh.
They really, they really just don't care, um, man, I mean, well, we're gonna get into somebody who's running, cause we got an election coming up, and when I read you the list of, of stuff, you'll probably think they're gonna win it, but, you know, it's disturbing and ridiculous and, um, you know, and there's a party here that endorses them, which is even more disgusting. One half of the, of the corrupt political machine is endorsing, the other ones would too, if he was a Democrat, believe me, they would. It's not like it makes a difference, they just don't care, um, she needs to be in a bar, Scott, oh geez. Scott said, I'll put that up. Very fun.
I like the thing that Scott said about all those candles, that she was blowing out represents all the victims that she sends to Nick.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's so fucked up.
So how are they connected, are they related?
No, they're, they're very close though, they're very close.
Didn't they, didn't they have, shared office or whatever?
Yeah, they shared an office, a law office, and they work together, and um, he ran her campaign, he was running her campaign for a city court judge. I mean, that's how I ended up getting Nick as an attorney, is because of her, I went to her and she referred me to Nick, she referred tons of people to Nick, that's what she did. She just passed everybody.
And then he did, don't forget, he worked on Caroline Witasik's, I mean, she, she was the DA for Niagara County, and now she's a Supreme Court Ju, I don't know, Niagara County Supreme Court Judge, I mean, he worked on some pretty, um, you know, for some reason.
Campaign too, uh, Janelle's brother.
Yeah, so he did a lot, and he, and I guess for these people, I think, I can't believe he did that much, that they had to, you know, that they had to reward him with such a, I mean, what a gift, I mean, I, I mean, I thought he would be, I thought like, seven years in prison wouldn't have been enough. You know what I mean, and he got four months in county jail.
That kind of, that kind of lends more credit to the theory that perhaps maybe Faso is subsidizing D'Angelo in some way.
Well, all I'm gonna say is without saying too much is, go look at her Facebook page, go look at her Facebook picture and you tell me who that kid looks like.
I saw it, I saw it, crazy, it's wild.
Now.
If you look at the real, also a sexual predator, and it was in trouble for sexual misconduct and all that stuff, um, yeah, that don't look like, it doesn't look like the father, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so now, um, last week, we had an incre, you guys, um, we'll get Katie back on. We, I need to have her back on when we're all together, you know what I mean, maybe after this court date here, that's coming up, uh, the eighth, this Wednesday, 10 a.m. in Heartland Town Court. And she's hoping, and this, and she knows it's hard, because obviously it's all the way out in Heartland, and it's 10 o'clock in the morning, but she'd love to have court watchers if possible.
Yeah.
You know.
Thing for her to see if we can get some people out there.
So, did you guys see, I mean, I don't know, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about the bail. I mean, it's, it's really, and if you're out there Katie, chime in, of course, I think I saw you on the message board, um, it was, but the bond, the, the, it was fake, how did you read that Dennis, I know we were talking about it earlier.
Yeah, well, so, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, um, even the, the American Surety Bond Company verifying the bond documents claim that they were fraudulent, they weren't certified. All of those documents need to be certified, so that you can, if you remove a document from a file, they know that there was a record of it, right? Um, now, I've never gotten into a lot of trouble where I've needed a bond before, so I don't really know how the, the bond process works, but, um, there's just, you know, there's so, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but the more I read about it, the more I believe that none of it, none of it makes sense, it doesn't add up, she's got, she's got court and, and Heartland, right? But then the appeals is through, what, the county?
Um, city of Niagara Falls they're putting.
Yeah, it, there's a lot of things that don't add up to this, and then the, the, the bond on top of it, and then, if I'm understanding correctly, she was actually out before the bondsman had even arrived.
Right, yeah, and think about, they put $100,000 on her. Or fifty thousand, yeah, can you imagine?
Daniel, they gave nothing for Nick D'Angelo.
Yeah, she got, she got, and it was a fake charge, the charge was she was trying to entice someone under the age of seventeen, which was talking about her own children, I assume, that they, that she was trying to contact them.
Yeah, and she can't even go near her children.
Yeah, she can't, she has no way to contact them, they have completely, you know, blacked her out. She doesn't even know.
Years back.
She doesn't even know if they're, they think she, they might think she's not even alive anymore, who knows what they're saying?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Yeah, they're in another state.
Let me ask you something, um, maybe one of you guys will know, so this fraud of the, that's more on the bond, the, the bonds, the bail bondsman, right, they're the ones that would be in trouble for the fraud.
Yeah, it's a felony.
And it would be them, they're the ones that didn't certify it, they're the ones that are keeping the money, and all that.
Yeah, and it sounds like, um, you know, in addition to the bail bondsman, but she's also got, uh, she's pursuing criminal charges against Justice Joanne Sullivan, her, her court clerk, um, and as well as the, the bond company.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of irons in the fire with that.
And think about that she got out. They let her, that's what I mean about all the charges she has, even the ones originally from New Mexico, the ones where they bring her back, and all of that, and they parade her on, on all the news channels, and out, you know, and with cuffs and shackles, but no chart, nothing ends up happening, like.
And you know, they don't do updates either on the news about her, they had no problem showing her in shackles and making her out to look like a bad person, but they don't do any updates on her, nothing.
Remember that first, remember when we heard her speak for the first time on TV when she said she was going to, she was going to reveal the corruption? You knew right there, she was.
You knew right there, everybody knew, I haven't seen one person so far say that there isn't something wrong with that story, that there's more to it than what they're saying.
Katie says Heartland Town Court is also fully responsible for trying to pass off false documents as real in collaboration with the Niagara County Sheriff's Office and the local bail bondsman. You okay?
Well, they all colluded together.
Yeah.
Makes sense, because it, I mean, okay, it's one thing to rip somebody off, but for what reason, there's obviously other things at play.
Um, Katie also says the court clerk also incriminated herself by telling us during a recorded interaction that the court has been in constant communication with the bail surety company.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's just lie after lie, and, um, and in the meantime, Katie doesn't see her kids for 20 months. How does she not deserve, I don't give a fuck, there's people doing all kinds of things.
Yeah, way, I mean, yeah, they let people see their kids who are legit drug addicts and murderers even get to see their kids still, get to visit their kids.
Yeah, and they've completely, they have tried to erase her, and she would have been erased, and how many women or men probably do get erased? Because maybe they don't have the, she's got a great family backing, so that's, that's been her thing, you know, they've helped her all the way, helping her out. But you know, there's some that have nothing, so if you have nothing, you're done, I mean.
And she's just amazing too, I mean, the, you can tell from the first time we had her on the podcast to now, I mean, she's learned so much, and I know she's taught herself everything, and I just think that's amazing, so, I mean, I think that, that type of person doesn't come along often to where, uh, you know, where they push back against the system.
Yeah, she threw a wrench into the plans, I mean, once she decides to fight back, I don't think people usually fight back. Uh, let me see, Katie says something else here, ask yourself why. Ask yourself why they would need to produce fake bail documents. It all lines up with the fictitious criminal in quotes, charges. I have been maliciously. Darn it, maliciously prosecuted with, for the past twenty months and counting. These are my children who I raised on my own with the help of my family right here in Wheatfield, New York. Before I was forced into hiding to protect them from documented abuse. So, uh, God, there's gonna come a day, we were talking about it on their podcast where they are, it's got to. You know what I mean? There's gonna be a reuniting. There's going to be, because this is. I, I don't know, I don't know why our local, I, oh my God, I do know why. I do know why, because they get paid by, you know, when it's, when it's, when it's um, time for uh, what do you call it? Elections, the sheriff is going to buy advertising. I, I, I know what goes on here, but it's amazing that no one picks up on the story at all.
No, I know. It's the perfect story to pick up on too. You would think people would be running for it.
Yeah.
They're coming after her voice, you know, it's um, the, the punishment is in the process. We all know that you live in a world now where you can accuse anybody of anything and. Really just the cost of litigation alone is enough to sink somebody and. My hat goes off to Katie because what she did, she spent a lot of money. I can only imagine. I don't know how much, but I know it's a lot. You know, I, I've been there, done that, not to this degree though. And so what did she do? She, she started representing herself per se and, and she, she's got it right. I mean, she's, she's able to represent herself and put things on the record in a way that no attorney would.
Right.
Or even maybe could because they're not as familiar with the case. It's closest to her. But that takes an emotional toll on somebody and um, I can't imagine uh, what she's going through. And um, you know, so Katie, you're watching, you know, I support you, I'm rooting for you. Um, just look after yourself, you know, don't, um, don't let these people destroy you mentally because it's how they win. Just gotta keep pushing along. They wanna silence you.
Yeah, we, and we're gonna be here. I mean, we're pretty much the only ones that'll do it. That will talk about it, you know, or, or give her an opportunity to speak. Um, because no one else has. I mean, Channel two, four and seven did it after they paraded her around.
And cuffs.
And they allowed that, the, this, the sheriff, remember to say what he said.
Yeah.
He really should. What he's, I, I gotta get that out one day. I do have that, remember we played it. What he said there was really something. I mean, I, but you know, no one's giving her an opportunity. I really. This is the one time where I, I don't even know where you turn, like. If you could find someone nationally, maybe that would consider this, I mean, because this isn't. See though, it's everything. It's just like going back to the cases here with the, you know, D'Angelo and everything. It's, it's right down Broadway, right? It's right with, it's with the rape, it's with child trafficking, it's all that. And it's, no one wants a part of that, that I see.
No.
It's because all of these organizations, all of these alphabet agencies that were created to protect the people are becoming a weapon against the people. Even more so, if, even more so if you uh, you know, use your voice.
Yeah, and you, you said something really good there Dennis and I agree. If someone can just accuse you of anything, and in this day and age, I guess with the internet, that will travel around the world so fast before you can even catch up to it. And that's, that's tough. You know what I mean? At, at one point, I mean, they, I forgot, there's a saying about that, about a lie going around, you know, before you even get a chance to, to answer.
Yeah.
So, and that's kind of, that's what happened to her.
Yeah. You become guilty in the court of public opinion before you even get to. You know, um, before you even get to prove your innocence, you're even, even then, even if you prove that you're innocent, you're, you're left trying to rebuild your reputation. Over something like that and um. It's, it's, that's the day and age we live in. Anybody can say anything they want about anybody. And unfortunately, the people that uh, usually do get any kind of um. Any kind of punishment are those that are speaking the truth because it goes against the narrative. It goes against, you know. Uh, uh, what, what people are, are trying to protect, which is, which is their own uh, terrible actions.
Yeah.
Old friend of the show, Sadie says, I can't explain what it means to me to see so many who speak out for what's right. And speak louder on what's wrong. Love you all for that. Real is what you all are and more should be. Thank you. Very nice.
Katie, you know, Sadie too, let's not forget, with, let's just bring it back really quick for a second.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We were at the, we were protesting and she was assaulted by somebody holding a Faso sign. While screaming Faso for city court judge and they arrested him and then they released him really fast, but let's not forget just associated with that too.
Yeah, yeah, isn't that, that's fucking, I mean, yeah, that's right, I, that, we actually have the picture of it, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, and that got all pushed and she got screwed. They wouldn't even, remember they wouldn't give her an order of protection or nothing?
Yeah, then they tried putting her in front of Judge Faso.
Yeah.
Has Katie been gag ordered? I'm just curious.
Let's see what Katie has to say here. I think the tides will be turning soon with the latest developments regarding the fraudulent bail documents. If you know anything about my family and I, we will never give up. God didn't bring us this for nothing. There is a much bigger purpose and we are fully dedicated. Thank you to everyone, including Citizens United for all of your support and helping me find my voice. Uh, and Katie says, no, I haven't. Uh, Sadie says, I couldn't even go to court. Right.
Ridiculous, that's.
Yeah, they didn't ever get, yeah, I mean, Katie, that's the thing with Katie. They have completely, they miscalculated. This was the wrong one. You know what I mean? Like there, I, I, for every one Katie, there's probably ten thousand others.
Yeah.
That, that have to just go away. For whatever reason, it, like I said, it could be they have no family, they have no one to back them up, they're alone.
I know somebody else it's happening to also and it's sickening. It is.
And it's all child trafficking. It's all for the fact of just to steal the kids. It's, I don't know, it's fucking sick, but um, so anyways. Quickly, um, I wanted to get into something with you guys and then I'll let you know Dennis. Uh, but of course you know this person, I think, when I read off the charges, you might remember. You might not. But I want you to hear, he's running for city, he's, hey, good evening Bill. He's running for um, Niagara Falls um. City Council. He was a city councilman back in the nineties, this guy, okay? While he was city councilman, but let's, let's just go down the charges, okay? Let's just start off. He did serve seventeen months in prison for money laundering, tax evasion and conspiracy. During that period of time before he were to have been sentenced, he was, he was arrested for DWI and leaving the scene. So he spent seventeen months in prison for money laundering, tax evasion and conspiracy and at the time he was a city council person when that happened. So then he gets, I guess he gets out and he gets arrested for harassment and endangering the welfare of a child and obstruction. DWI again. He then gets another harassment, obstruction and resisting, and resisting arrest charge. Um, because of a nine-one-one call from his girlfriend. He then goes on now, at this time back in the, I guess sort of in the nineties, maybe it's the early two, no, it had to be early two thousands. Um, Third Street here in Niagara Falls was trying to revitalize, oh, they were doing something, trying to do something or whatever. Well anyways. You know, great way to revitalize is putting up Lotus Spa Massage Parlor. So they put that in there. And he worked there as their accountant, of course. Um, even though I thought his, maybe he was, he was stripped of being an accountant, but then they gave it back to him. But okay, he works as an accountant there. Well, the FBI, it's the Human Trafficking Task Force was involved. On a thirty month uh, invest, investigating this place. And it ends up being a, a brothel um, where illegal immigrants were being brought in, women here to be prostitutes. Forced them into prostitution. Um, so okay, there you go. Those people get arrested. There's a couple people, just really obscure people from places I never even heard of throughout Western New York got arrested for it. But none of the major people that went there like are, are old, because we know we had a bunch of them, they, they walked away. He himself, I have this, it's really unbelievable. Let me find it. Um. Here's what his quote is in the Niagara Falls Reporter. He, and it goes, I was shocked when they were arrested, Gao said. I didn't see anything going on wrong. They had a huge sauna. They spent thirty thousand dollars for this oxygen thing that people sit in. I met the girls, we went for drinks, went to the casino. I dated one of them for three months. I had a couple massages, massages, sure, but there was no sex involved that I witnessed.
Yeah, sure.
So that means he dated an underage girl.
Exactly, so there was sex involved.
Because they were being trafficked here.
Yeah.
For that reason, prostitution.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, and, and he openly admits it. I mean, I'm not even, it's his quote. He admits it that he did that. Right in the pa- right in the Gazette, in the, not the Gazette, the, the reporter and at the time, the reporter was better than it is today. Way better. At the time, way back then, you had that Mike Hudson guy, you had people writing there that were pretty good. I mean, they broke some things in the city back then. Now it's a circus. But um, so this guy right here. Indoor, let me see if I can put him up, there he is, Mike Gao, see him? He is running for city um, council and I'm gonna say this, I've said it a million times on this show. I don't um, I can't stand both parties. So this is nothing, had nothing to do against Republicans or Democrats. I think they're equally scum. I think they're corrupt as hell. They're one of the biggest corrupt organization. They're like, they're a criminal organization. They're scums, both of them. These people, see this mailer right here, let me find it. And the guy who's with him on the mailer too, this guy who's running. He should really wonder why he's on that mailer and should be ashamed of himself. Um, paid for by the New York Republican State Committee. What the fuck?
Official endorsement.
Yeah, the Niagara Falls Committee definitely adores them, this guy. Um, so I'm gonna say, if you're out there and you're gonna vote, I, how do you vote for that, right?
Right.
And I'm just gonna ask people, you know, as, as a councilman, right? This is the guy that's gonna be responsible for approving tax levies. Traffic stuff, traffic regulations, contracts for public improvements, right?
Yeah.
This is, this is the person that's gonna be, one of the people that's gonna be responsible for that.
Yeah, and, and he's, here, here's his thing. Sir, how about, this is great. On the back of this stupid thing that I got in the mail addressed to me, which is me, I don't understand why I would have got this. Um, I, I don't, I don't know, probably, but anyways. It says he's a certified public accountant. He forgets to tell you though, they stripped him of that because he went, you know, what happened with the seventeen months in prison. Somehow they gave it back to him. One of the things, he says he's tough on crime. How about that? He's tough on crime.
Yeah.
So. What's that?
The crime.
Yeah, he is the crime.
He is the crime.
Yeah, what's that Robin?
Didn't he run nude through a park?
Oh, I'm not, you know what? I, I didn't get into any stuff about it. There were, I, you, you, you may be right. The only reason I didn't get into all that was only because I think he, he may have had an addiction at the time. Uh, so I kinda like, alright, I mean, like, here's the thing, still, no, I know what you're saying. There was, but there's all these charges, harassment, endangering the welfare, obstruction, uh, resisting around, I mean, it's insanity. DWI over and over and over and over again. Not only does DWI, leaving the scene.
He's an habitual offender. This isn't a one-off, you know, I had a bad day, I'm a victim of circumstance shit. This is a way of life.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I gotta, I gotta get going. Ryan needs me at home.
Oh, okay, alright, well, uh, no problem, well, we'll see ya.
I'll text you.
Okay.
Let me see, I'll get you here, I'll be out here. There you are.
Trying to poke us in the eye when she was leaving.
Yeah, I hope everything's okay. Yeah, um, like to find out, but any, but yeah, so this was the guy I was talking about to you earlier. Um, yeah, I, I just, and that, I don't understand. Like, here's my thing, like, why, now we get Niagara Falls Republican, I don't even care, they're, they're. And Democrats, a big joke, scum, all of it, whatever you wanna say, um, the party. New York State doing this really shocks me. I mean, why wouldn't they figure? Like, don't they know who this is? I wonder. You know?
I mean, is that really the best person that you're gonna throw your weight behind? The guy is a habitual criminal. I mean, he's spent time in jail doing, and even, even in his own words, it's not like that helped him out any.
Right, and he was a ci- he was a city councilman. When he was arrested and, you know, had to serve seventeen, he was one before. And uh, he did seventeen months and I guess the only, the biggest reason why, because I'll tell you this. That I even get involved here and, and going through this whole list is what happened at Lotus Spa. That's the, because honestly, he probably does fit right into the, you know what I mean? He's probably perfect. But then Lotus Spa might put it over the edge and he will win. Um, because this is some sick shit, what he did over there. And it's funny because when I read the local newspaper, right, and they put in that he's running for um. You know, he's running for city council, I think that should be put in there. Like, you shouldn't just put the, and just omit, omit everything and pretend like it didn't happen.
Right.
What do you think Dennis? Shouldn't they, shouldn't they, they should tell you.
What, what? Like be bipartisan about it and state the facts and the history. I mean. Usually when somebody's running for office, they usually pride themselves on their history. Uh, you know, what they've done in the community, um, in his case, it would be more like what he didn't do. Um, but that, these are, these are common things when you run, when you run for office. And to have somebody that's supposed to be. A voice in the community that's gonna, that, that might determine or sway the outcome of contract negotiations. For public improvement projects. This guy has corruption written all over him. I mean, it's the same people at Lotus Spa are the, probably the ones that are actually donating to his campaign and funding this. I mean, it's, it's all a circle, um, and it's, and it's not by chance either. Uh, so, but some people, you know, they don't do their homework and they'll just vote across the party line for. Whoever, you know, whatever party they belong to and they don't really do any homework on it. And it's unfortunate because these are the people that determine our fate and, and, and outcomes in the community.
And, and when he was in, sent to prison for money laundering, tax evasion and conspiracy, he was working for the local. At the time, um, uh, bookmaker, booking. Um, so that's where that is. So, you know, there's org- I mean, there's even a touch of organized crime to the, to the mix.
And that's only what we know of.
Right, yeah, that's only what he was caught, yeah, and, and with all of that. He never spent a day in jail on all those, other than the conspir- like these DWIs, harassments, endangering the welfare, obstruction. Running away from the scene, blah, 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 not a, not a minute, so. Yeah.
I'm a conservative and I, and I would never, I, you know what, I, it's not about voting with your party across the line always. It's, you, you need to understand who these individuals are as people, or equally as important who they're not. Um, we don't need somebody like that in the community. We don't.
Yeah, and, and then I, I always know, anybody can run for anything. I know they can run. But why, why New York State or even, I mean, I wish Niagara County and Niagara Falls had had a break. Because they're the ones that really know who he is.
But he's endorsed. That's what makes it even worse.
Yeah, he's endorsed. They push, I see there, they have, um, I mean, I'm watching, I'm wa- this is what kills me. Guys like this guy here who's running with him there, Vincent Col- Vince Colley and others, like doing fundraisers together. I, I don't know how they do this, knowing what they know. It's, it's, it, it's really, it's really disgusting. And, and like I said, this is not an attack on Republicans because Democrats are just as bad and just as terrible. And if it was on their side, they would do the same damn thing. It wouldn't matter.
Dumb bag shit.
Yeah.
That's why nothing gets done is because it's, it's in the institutions. I mean, I think the people, the people who are doing these things are the people who are in charge. They're the people that are running things, so of course they're not gonna get rid of it.
If you or I or Dennis or whatever, if we ran, we would not get endorsed. That's what I'm saying, like, there would be no endorsement for us. Because I didn't commit these crimes is the way I feel.
Right.
Um, so.
Because nobody feels like they owe us anything, because, right? And that's really what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Is, is these people, they all protect each other and they all feel like they owe each other something for, you know, the. This that they got out of or that, right? And, and that's, that's kinda how it works, um.
Yeah.
It's dirty, but unfortunately Robin kinda made a good point. And a lot of the times, these, these psychopaths, they like power. And unfortunately, they seek positions of power whereas somebody like myself or John, we don't really, we don't. I, you know, I don't know about you, John, but I'm alright. I, you know, I don't know about you, John, but I'm all right without having power in this world. I don't.
Yeah, I'm sure that I, probably with what my brothers do around in this city, I'm sure I could have, I, I'm sure I could be sitting in a better place than I am today. You know what I mean? Easily. Um, go work at City Hall.
Would you be a better person?
No, no.
No.
No, no, that was the choice to that.
Right.
And, and then.
Look, we've all made mistakes, right?
Sure.
And I, and I'm not, and I'm by no means playing devil's advocate. The man's record speaks for itself. It's not like he fucked up once or twice, right?
Right.
Habitual offender. This is something that he does. He's obviously got connections to other people that do the same things. This is his crowd. This is who he mingles with. You are who you hang out with. But at the same time, the difference between, um, you know, a good person and a bad person, is somebody that learns from their mistakes. I've done a lot of terrible things in my life that I regret, but I learned from them. And I try to be the example that I wanna set for my son and other people. That doesn't necessarily mean that I don't have a checkered past. It just means that I've learned from those things and grown as a person. And when I look at this gentleman, I don't really know as if I feel convinced that he has. I, I don't. I think that this is a way of life, and this is just another means to the end, so that he can just continue to do what he does, which is.
Yeah.
That's terrible.
Oh, I, before we go, I'm gonna to, I never do this for myself, but I'm gonna do this. In the Niagara Gazette, someone referenced me.
Yes.
And this is very funny.
Yeah.
Because I, I wrote a letter in 2019, the mayor is my brother, and I wrote a letter in the paper about that. I, I haven't talked about that letter since, really. It's been a long time. I, I haven't talked about this election coming up, mayor's election, at all. I haven't said a damn word. Not for any other reason, other than I'm sick of it, and I don't care anymore. It's useless. I don't care. I didn't, the people that are running against him, I feel are a setup. They're not even there, really. They're just kinda there. It, he's connected with Hokel and, and Witas. I mean, he's, I, I will be stunned. But this was cool. Hold on. And I can't believe this person remembered the date I wrote it. On June 21st, 2019, the Gazette published a letter to the editor, written by me. He's the younger brother of Mayor Restino, who was a candidate at the time. The letter was shocking, and as I'm sure many people did, I shook my head and considered it was a family feud gone public. However, in hindsight, I wish that I had heeded the warnings. Yeah. You know what, though? You get what you earn. Because I told you, I, I said it in that, if I had that letter, I can't remember it, but I'll tell you this, I said it in there, that I did, this wasn't what you think. This isn't what I, I'm telling you. Nothing I'm gonna tell you went on in my house. I'm gonna tell you everything that all of you could see outside.
Yeah.
Whether it's a softball field or a bowling alley, you could see it. And, uh, I told some city council people here, when he first got elected, right? There was some city council people, when they used to talk to me, they don't talk to me no more. When they used to talk to me, they would ask me about him. And I told them, if you allow him to do, if you give him an inch, he's taken three yards. And then once he realizes you gave him the three yards, he's gonna call you a bitch after doing it. So he's gonna spike the football, he's gonna just, and he won't stop. And they did it. They did that. And and now they're mad at him. But they loved him not long ago. You know what I mean? Now they're mad. So, whatever, you get what you're.
Truth always prevails. It always does. Sometimes it's late, but it always does. And people find out the truth in the end.
And you know what? At this point in time, I don't care what he, like, as far as who becomes mayor, whatever. I mean, he could stay mayor forever. It, it doesn't mean anything to me. He could, he could lose. That's, that's great, too. Whatever. Um, but I, I, I realize, though, sometimes that, like, if, I, I think it, the 2019 letter was it for me. Like, what else might, I'm not saying no more. You know what I mean? Like, what else am I gonna say?
Well, yeah, you said what you had to say. I mean, whether people heed the warning or not, that's up to them. That's their business, but you did your part.
This is the only time I've talked about it. And I never, I'm spike, I spiked the football there a little bit.
Isn't that the word, isn't, isn't that the worst part about all this and everything going on in the world, right? Is you can be totally right about something, um, and you can put it in people's, right in front of their face. But that doesn't mean that you're gonna convince them.
Yeah.
Like, people already have their mind made up. They don't care.
Yeah, no, no doubt. And I'm gonna tell you this.
The most frustrating thing.
I'm gonna make a prediction on the, uh, election. I think that he will win handily. He wins two to one. Um, I, I can't see how he loses. He seems to have, um, he seems to have, yeah, I should run for mayor. Robin would choke and kill me.
Yeah.
Um, what I'm saying, they, I think he's gonna win big. He's connected to Kathy Hochul. I mean, they're, and, and Niagara Falls is got a, it might be a rundown, rotten place, but there's a lot of money involved when you head towards Goat Island and all that. So, New York State likes Goat Island. They like the money they get from Goat Island, which is all of it. Um, so, him and Hochul are pretty close. When I say the name Henry Witazek, that's the guy from OTB, they're all very, he's not losing. He, he's just not. The, I, I believe they would fix it if they had to, because he, he doesn't lose. So anyways, that's my prediction. He wins two or three to one. He wins handily. Um, and, um, I will also say that I'm gonna, you know what, I'm gonna give Niagara Falls some credit, and Dowell doesn't win. What do you think? I don't think, you don't think he wins?
He wins.
Huh, well, we'll see.
He wins.
Dennis, I'm sorry, you're not from around here, I know.
No, no, I'm not, and I'm more of like a geopolitics kinda guy.
Yeah.
It's interesting, though, because, you know, it's the corruption that I see locally is the same kind of corruption, just on a wider scale.
Yeah.
Uh, nationally, it's really no different. It's the same people doing the same shit.
Yeah, they just emulate, you're right. I know.
Maybe they got a little better at it, right? That's, that's pretty much the only thing, is they just, it's on a larger scale. They're, they're better at it. They're more well-connected. I mean, that's.
But, you know what? Friend of the show Jennifer Lemoine is, is on the ballot. And I'm gonna say this about Jennifer Lemoine. She's not a part of either party. Um, they shunned her, they, they made fun of her, they've done all kinds of things to her. She, uh, she speaks up at every meeting and does all that, and I, we were all proud of her that she got on the ballot, that she went out, got all the signatures, she was on the ballot. Uh, they even let her on the debate stage. So, good for Jennifer. People shouldn't, she, out of this whole group, I mean, I look at Unique, why I did talk to her, and the other people, I don't even care. Jennifer probably is the one that cares the most. And I'm sure will get the least. And that's unfortunate, because, you know, because she speaks out at, at the city council meetings and she doesn't back down, they, you know what they do. They make you look like, they try to make you look like you're crazy. And, uh, that's too bad. With election time tomorrow, I wish Jennifer all the luck, because she was, she was great on our show. Remember when she had her own thing?
Yeah.
Jennifer's time?
Yeah, go Jennifer.
I'd vote for the person who isn't paid by anybody.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much her.
That's Jennifer, then that's who it should be.
Jennifer and probably Unique, but Unique was not.
Yeah, like.
Um, you know, but I, I'm not gonna go down this list. It'll bore everybody. Um, but anyways, Dennis, thanks for sitting in with us. And you know, um, you could be a regular. I know you might not wanna, you know, you've got other things to do, but we'd love to have you every week if you feel like it. Or, you know what I could do? Is just send you the link, and when you feel like it, just pop on.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I love doing this. Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff, you know, I don't really know what to say, so I try not to say anything at all, you know? Uh, I, I don't really follow up, you know, like the local politics, right? So I'm in the Tonawandas area.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm more, I follow national geopolitical stuff. But, uh, I always like hearing about this. Um, I might not always have something to say, but I, I enjoy being here, so thank you.
Well, you're a smart guy, and what's good is you can listen, and then I love hearing the opinion, because you're not from here. That's one thing that is a problem in this area. When people not from here come in here and try to see and maybe fix it, they're told you're not from here, get out. When we actually need the eyes of somebody who isn't as bitter as I am.
Yeah.
And, and wants to get out of here like it's, you know, escape from Alcatraz. But, so you would want somebody like, you know, but they don't want that. Because if they did, they would, they'd think, oh my God, this is unbelievable, and and all that. But we do gotta get together on here and talk, because Israel and Palestine is continuing to fight on. And, um, that, we need to talk. I saw Donald Trump today, and, um, he had his testimony. I thought that was really interesting. But maybe next week or something, Dennis, if you're up to it.
I'm definitely down for it, you know, and the folks that watched the, uh, the last geopolitical discussion that I had here, a lot of that is already come to fruition. So it's, you know, it's, it's interesting, because we broke a lot of that news first for the people that were watching, Citizens United, when we first started talking about that. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to follow up on it and talk more about it. Some good stuff, crazy stuff, crazy times we're living in.
Yeah, definitely, Dennis. Well, you know what? I'm gonna let you go. We're gonna go, guys. This was episode number 169 in the books. Uh, we'll be back with 170, uh, next week. Dennis, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, Dennis.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.